Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting and Monday study session. It is Monday, August 28th, 2023. The time is 11:02 a.m. We have all members present except for council members Denson and Kruever, who are both excused. That brings us to item two, review of the August 29th, 2023 council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, to brief the council.
Thank you and good morning. This is tomorrow's regular council meeting agenda has been amended. We'll start with your consent agenda under introduction and scheduling for ordinances. You have one item. It's 202336. This is adopting a new chapter 2.40 of the Code Commission on Equity. And this is for referral to Health and Human Services, and you'll be setting the final on this one for September 26th. It's possible that there will be another resolution. I think there's more discussion to be had on this related to the committee of the whole schedule. To add here possibly. So moving down to final action on your consent under resolutions. You have a few items here. They are all appointments. First is confirming the appointment of one new member to the Frederickson Advisory Commission. The next is our 2023 130. This is confirming the reappointment of one existing member to the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission. Next is our 2023 131. This is confirming the appointment of a new member to the Ethics Commission. And finally, you have our 2023 132, and this is confirming the appointment of a new member to the Sheriff's Civil Service Commission. The, one of the additional items on your consent agenda is under D, Action on Grant Applications. And you'll see the Federal Aviation Administration grant, Tacoma Narrows Airport obstruction removal and fencing. And Mr. Bokey will speak to this shortly. And then under F, other items, there is a motion approving the use of $1,881,130 in vacancy savings in the Corrections Bureau to cover increased costs for inmate medical services. And I believe Mr. Bokey can answer any questions related to that. Moving now to section seven, you have one proclamation, and that is proclaiming the month of September 2023, a suicide prevention awareness month in Pierce County. And Councilmember Hitchen has requested that one. There are no ordinances on tomorrow's agenda, so we'll move right to section nine. And you have our 2023 120. This is establishing a policy and process for the display of art in council chambers and reception area. And this did receive a due pass at rules on August 14th, and there is one amendment to this proposal. Number two is our 2023 127. This is setting the date of an evening district number six council meeting. And this will be Wednesday, September 27th at 6:30 p.m. at the DuPont City Council Chambers. And those are your agenda items for tomorrow's regular council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Are there questions for Ms. Long before we get to the amendment on 2023 120? Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. And this can be put at a different place if need be, but I was just, I had some questions about the vacancy savings and the investment there. And now would be appropriator during grants since.
Um, let's go to that now. Mr. Bokey, this might come to you.
Sorry, Mr. Bridges.
Sorry, Mr. Bridges. Uh, Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you. I was just considering the litigation that's going on. Do we know if they're tracking who in the jail is costing certain number amounts of dollars and, and then the correlation there since we're putting vacancy savings into paying for additional costs?
We do have somebody on the line, but maybe, do you want me to introduce the topic?
Yes.
Right now? Okay. So you're under subsection F of the consent agenda. You do have a use of vacancy request from the Corrections Bureau. It is for $1,081,130. The currently available savings are in $3,549,540. And of course, just a week or so ago, you were asked, you also had a request for $961,550 for food costs. So in total, these are up over $2 million. This is, it has to do with medical costs in the jail. The medical costs in the jail are with a private entity, NAF Care. And they have made this request. The contract is for services. There are also pharmaceuticals, but that's an additional cost. And in this case, you'll see an increase. Apparently, there's an increased need for dental services in the jail. So a point four dentist becomes a point eight dentist, which is essentially full-time dentist. And a dental assistant goes from point four to point eight. This is, of course, for the remaining portion of the year in discussions with the Finance Department. And I believe this is a second request. I believe you received a request dealing with medical costs last year. But, but I might be getting that confused with other food cost increases. The, all these increases will be shown going forward that, you know, they are having discussions surrounding increasing medical costs in, in the jail. And, and will have an impact on the Corrections Bureau budget, a significant impact on the Corrections Bureau budget in the next biennium. So with that, we have Ms. Donna LaFriere from our Corrections Bureau Sheriff's Department. We may also, we invited Chief Jackson. I don't know if she was able to make it. If you have any questions, and I think that the question from Councilmember Hitchen would, would best be answered by the department.
Thank you. Donna, good morning.
Good morning.
Did you hear the question from Councilmember Hitchen?
I did. We don't track the expenses by the individual inmate. This is for overall services by our medical services provider along with the pharmaceuticals. But it is not tracked by the individual inmate.
Okay. Thank you. That's interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bokey, so that we understand if approved, if this vacancy savings expenditure is approved, after its expense, there will still be close to 20, close to $2 million in vacancy savings in the Sheriff's Department. Is that about accurate?
Correct. Yeah. And we will, and thank you. Yes, that is, that is correct. It looks like about two and a half million dollars. And then, of course, as you're part of your September 6th Budget Committee of the whole, you'll be getting the second quarter report. So you will be getting an update on, on what the vacancy savings look like in, in all areas, including corrections. And you can make some judgments about going forward, but these, these are the best available numbers that we have. That would leave you with about two and a half million dollars.
Thank you. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned, what was the name of the service provider?
It's a company called NAF Care, N-A-P-H-C-A-R-E.
Okay. And they have a contract with, with the county. When is that contract up for renewal?
We'd have to ask.
Okay. If I can get that answered.
Donna, do you have the answer to that question? Donna, are you still there?
I'm new. I'm sorry. Yes, the contract expires at the end of 2023. We're going out to bid this year for a new contract. So that is in process. I'm not sure where it is in the process. I'd like to go back to the medical information question that I was asked. This was for an overall contract to run our jail clinic. I'm not sure if that helps answer the question about tracking it by inmate. They have, they go and they set appointments and they provide care to all of the inmates, but it isn't, the cost isn't by inmate. I'm not sure if that clarifies a little more.
Councilmember Morell.
And Donna, since this is going out for an RFP this year, are you gonna include dental in the next package?
Yes. Yes, that will be included. This package also included additional liability insurance. It went up to $2 million. And with a $9 million aggregate. Just letting you, that was part of the expense beyond the dent.
And do they provide your mental health, behavioral health care also?
They do not.
So that's an out.
Department.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, any other questions about that, Mr. Bokey? And we appreciate department staff making themselves available to try to answer questions in real time. It saves a lot of back and forth and ability to stay focused on the conversation at hand. So thank you for being available, Donna. Any other questions before we get to the amendment on 2023 120? Not seeing any. Mr. Bridges, to brief on council amendment number one.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You may recall that 2023 120 was heard in rules on August 14th. Final is tomorrow. There is one amendment by Councilmember Hitchen. It will make two changes. First, it states that art should be displayed for no more than three months or as approved by the Rules and Operations Committee. And the second change adds a definition for art. Art means all visual media such as paintings, murals, photographs, sculptures, or figurines intended to be located in a fixed place. Art does not include decorations associated with seasons and holidays. You happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Bridges. We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, and thank you for working on this. Actually, I guess mine isn't on the amendment. The underlying ordinance I had been a sponsor of, and then somehow my sponsorship came off. So I, that was noticed. So I'm not sure who we need with staff, but get me back on, because I'm still sponsoring the underlying. Apologies, Chair. I really should have done that to the amendment.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bridges, your, your reading of the, the amendment. In the event the Rules and Operations Committee wishes to delegate responsibility to the Chief of Staff or someone else, your understanding of the amendment is the Rules and Operations Committee could choose to do that if they wish?
I would agree with that statement, and the reason is because this is totally a county council function, and the council ultimately can decide what it wants to do.
Thank you. Any other questions about the amendment, council amendment number one to 2023 120? Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for clarifying that, because that was my question also. Because if we chose to purchase a piece of art, it would then, according to this, unless the Rules Committee ruled otherwise, it would have to be cycled out every three months.
That is correct.
Which, I guess, somewhat complicates the process. So if we just had language that, I mean, we're moving towards having the Chief of Staff establish a policy, which, fine. I just don't know why we need that paragraph in there. So I guess that's my concern.
Any, any other questions at this time or clarifications about council amendment number one? Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, which part, is it the D or the E paragraph?
D.
D. Okay. Um, the thinking on that one was, I think, to, to try and make sure that we were rotating artwork and providing opportunities. And even if we did invest in art, that we would be able to, like, change between districts or bring other types of arts. So it was to encourage variety and allowing for different types of art to be available. And however that ends up looking, just thought it would be a way of kind of making sure that that was part of our thinking as a council, at least this council. And when I'm not here anymore, then I guess the next council can do whatever they want.
And it's a should and not a shall.
Right.
So the expressing guidance to the council, the Chief of Staff, that should, it's conveying a sense of rotation.
Yeah.
Not permanency.
We, we actually, I, I had this thought process and talked through should versus shall. Like, I had my own little mini should versus shall conversations.
Their entire committee's about that.
You know, when you start answering your own questions, we're headed for trouble. So can we include this on council membership? Just kidding.
Uh, Councilmember Kruever.
Thank you, Chair. That doesn't stop the council from purchasing a piece of art, but anyway. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. There is one grant report for council consideration tomorrow, and that's a Federal Aviation Administration grant related to the Tacoma Narrows Airport for obstruction removal and fencing. Mr. Bokey, to brief on this grant request.
Thank you, Chairman L. Paul Bokey, council staff. This is the Tacoma Narrows Airport Obstruction Removal and Fencing. This is a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration. The grant would provide 90% of the total project costs. The project scope includes removal of ROFA in the Scald Runway removal and of object-free area. Runway object-free area ROFA and to put up a wildlife fence. This project is in your 2022, 23 cap, the capital section of the biennial budget. So it was anticipated, there is state money of $68,785. The other 668,000, excuse me, $68,785 for this project. The county share will come from the general fund. Projected, this will take in 2022, 24, 23, 24. And there are maps provided this time, and this is an important part of this, because it's, it's, you could see what is involved in this. The removal of 33 trees, those are in yellow or orange. And then in the blue areas, and that's 12 and a half acres total of clearing and grubbing. So the next map. You see the blue, and it's hard, it's harder to see, but there's a blue line to the left. Right there. Thank you. And that is the, the animal barrier to keep wildlife from coming out onto the runway. Mr. Trevor Treddy of our Planting and Public Works Department is here to speak to this and to answer your questions.
Thank you, Trevor. Do you have anything to add to the presentation this morning?
Uh, good morning, everyone. Real quick, for the record, my name is Trevor Treddy. I'm the Airport and Ferry Administrator with Pierce County Public Works. That was a good summary. I don't actually have a whole lot to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Thank you for making yourself available. Thank you for the additional detailed information. The, the diagrams and maps are very helpful to helping us understand what the proposed work here and associated grant to do this work. Council questions or comments? Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Bokey. This probably goes to Mr. Treddy. Are we planning on installing trees elsewhere after we remove 33 trees? Maybe not.
The plan at this point is to not replant trees. These trees represent what the FAA has classified as hazards to navigation. The trees, the, the 33 that are selected for removal are currently intersecting protected airspace or within the runway object-free area. So replanting them is not currently part of this project.
Is there a space somewhere on the property that is not in the runway area that we could add some trees?
I don't have an answer for you right now. Generally, no. Most of the airspace above the airport is protected to some degree or another by the federal rule, Part 77, that sets our, it essentially sets an imaginary cone around the airport that protects airspace for navigation. That extends beyond the borders of the current airport. So planting additional trees on airport property is not likely to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trevor, just if you could fill me in on some details. Originally, the FAA came and advised to remove far more trees than the 33. What was their original proposal?
So the environmental assessment, which closed in April of last year, 2022, surveyed 18,000 trees. Of those 18,000, 2,055 trees were identified as obstructions. Now, obstructions under the FAA's classification are different than hazards. So obstructions are potential issues and don't require immediate action by the FAA or the airport sponsor, in this case, Pierce County. The 33 trees out of those 2,055 that we do intend to cut are identified as hazards and must be mitigated for safety. So essentially, we've cut this project down as far as we can go and still meet the FAA's requirements and safely operate the airport.
What are the ramifications if, if we do not follow FAA rules for hazard mitigation?
So in the past, the county has used FAA funding for various projects and, and in fact, to acquire the airport in the first place. When we did that, we guaranteed to the FAA that we would adhere to the rules and regulations that they set, their policy. Failing to meet those rules requirements in the law has some, some really nasty side effects. The, the FAA could potentially sue us. They'll immediately withhold any additional funding for projects or support. No additional grants for Pierce County. They have gone so far as suing airport sponsors litigation in order to comply with the rules set forth in Part 77 and other parts that are governed by FAA, by the FAA.
Okay, thank you. Of those other 2,022 trees, in the future, will we have to deal with those as hazards at some point?
If they grow to be hazards, yes. The environmental assessment, when they, when they actually tag those 2,055 trees as obstructions, part of the criteria was currently an obstruction or expected to be an obstruction in the next five years. So as those trees continue to grow, they will likely, at least some of them, grow to be hazards. At that point, we will have to go through and remove them through the same process that we have done now. Likely an additional environmental assessment, full review, development of a project, et cetera. At this point, our six-year horizon for capital work at the airport does not include that. So it's safe to say that this is the only planned obstruction removal in the next six years at Tacoma Narrows Airport.
Okay, thank you for that. Just one more follow-up question. The county doesn't have any liabilities beyond the removal of the 33 trees. So the 2,000 trees, if a plane has an accident because of a tree in the flight safety area, we don't have any additional liabilities, do we, as a county?
I will check on that. I believe the answer is no, but I'll verify that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kimball.
Since we're getting so deep into the trees or the weeds, as it were, these trees that are projected for removal, do we know, are they native species or are they invasive species?
Uh, they're a mix. I believe there's four different species, though I couldn't name them sitting here. But there are minimally four different species that are slated for removal.
Okay, not, not that important. I don't need to follow up on that per se unless someone else wants it. Is there a plan where the trees are being removed to perhaps plant something, a native brush or bush to keep the ground cover, to keep saplings from coming up in, in that place so that we can, you know, if we don't plant something there, something will grow there. It's the Northwest. So it seems like it's an opportunity to plant native shrubs or bushes that won't get taller than we want in the areas. And over time, when we remove tall obstructions, make sure we don't have that in the future.
So in the runway object, oh, I'm sorry. In the runway object-free area, there is not an opportunity to replant. That is by its name, object-free. So there, the FAA will not support or allow any planting, intentional planting of anything there. But that is, those areas will be cleared. Outside of that area in the, what we call 20 to one slope, which is the, the other critical area that we're working with. We intend to leave the stumps to help mitigate a new growth. But the project as written does not call for the replanting of any native plants or, or any plants at all.
Is there a chance to kind of, I mean, I'm really looking where we're removing the trees. What we don't want is just other trees coming up there that we have to cut down later. Is there a chance to get ahead and even just do some minimal planting perhaps out of another budget if it's not in this one or to amend this one to?
Uh, quite honestly, I have to do a little digging on that. I know the FAA will not fund it. So if we would like to walk that path, it will be something that has to come out of the county's budget. Currently, that is not budgeted in this project. But as far as timeline, to see if it's something we could add or develop an additional project, I'll have to get back to you.
Okay. And I wonder if one of our conservation partners might be willing to provide native plantings or even do it as a project. So there, there may be a chance for a community project or something to help with that. Understanding it's under a runway and that that could run into a whole lot of issues of having a community project. But I think the idea would be, we don't want tall trees growing here. We're going to get there if we actively manage it and have a chance to return it to native plantings. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Kruever.
Thank, thank you, Chair. That, I kind of piggyback on that question in what trees that there are there. I'm wondering if they're salvageable for any higher use. Are they fir trees? Are they cottonwoods? Are they endangered? And I, I don't feel a need to replenish.
Some of the trees are identified as useful timber. Those will go to help. Those will be sold to help defray the cost of the project itself, and that's accounted for as you look at the project costs. The trees that are not eligible or useful as timber. Right now, the intent is to have the contractor haul those off and either chip them or use them elsewhere. I know some contractors recycle these trees for things like erosion mitigation along creeks and rivers, things like that. We have not identified that specifically in this project. Currently, it's just to sell any useful timber to help defray the cost and then have the contractor remove the felled trees.
Okay, I, just looking at the magnitude of the project with all of the trees that are going to be growing. And I don't think people go to the, drive by the airport to look at its aesthetics. So the, the tree canopy there, I don't think is, is relevant as investing somewhere else where people can enjoy it. So I, I, I guess I would encourage looking at taking more down for these purposes for safety. So thank, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Thank you, Mr. 3D, for making yourself available and answering our questions. This grant approval request will be on tomorrow's council meeting agenda for consideration. That brings us to item three, review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long.
Thank you. So this afternoon's Public Safety Committee has been canceled. We'll move to tomorrow, beginning at 9:30. There is a special meeting of the Health and Human Services Committee. There are a few presentations. The first is the State Opioid Settlement Funding Opportunities, and this will be with the Healthcare Authority. Next is Opioid Crisis Update. There are a number of presenters listed there. And then finally, you have Narcan Training tomorrow with the Health Department. At noon is your regular Tuesday study session. I'm just seeing the usual agenda items listed. I'm not aware of additions at this time. And at 3 o'clock is your regular council meeting. On Wednesday, the 30th, beginning at 9:30, you do have a special meeting of the Flood Control Zone District Executive. On Wednesday, the thirtieth, beginning at nine-thirty, you do have a special meeting of the Flood Control Zone District Executive Committee. And those are the meetings for the remainder of this week.
Thank you. Are there questions about the committee agendas for the week? Not seeing any. That brings us to item four, discussion of administrative items. Call on our chief of staff, Ms. Julie Murray. Ms. Murray, good morning.
Good morning, members. For the record, Julie Murray. Um I'd like to first point out that um an email was sent out to all the staff last week with their job descriptions. Um I have met with the HR department related to the class and compensation study. Uh there, we're working on a plan so that would be completed by November sixth, which is um ten days before, I think, the due day, due date is November fifteenth. Uh but one of the most important things for us to do in this process is to make sure that the job descriptions that we have today are accurate to the position um as well as, and this is on the advice of um HR, as to where we see that position being for the next two, three years. Uh so it's really important for that apples-to-apples comparison, um because what, from this point, once we have sort of some I would say very good job descriptions, they don't necessarily have to be final. But as they said, about eighty-five percent of what we think that job would be, that's the next step for them, is to look for comparables in other jurisdictions. Those jurisdictions they're currently looking at are those in within Washington State and a few that are within Oregon. Uh but that is itself a project for them, so they had actually wanted to have those job descriptions last week. Um but recognizing that we had both done a reorganization as well as, I think, um had some shifts, you know, in terms of job duties over the course of the last couple of years. It was really important that everyone have that opportunity to look at their job description. So I've asked staff to return their comments to me by um August thirtieth, this Wednesday. Next week, at the Rules and Operations Committee meeting, we'll talk about the council member aid position. That is the one that I most have to talk to supervisors, because there may be a belief or a view of what a person is doing. It may not necessarily be consistent with that of the supervisor. It also needs to be a conversation of what work should be done by this position. And I will say, at least in the month that I've been here, we do have um some things where I would say we're asking people to work out of classification um that we're kind of like bleeding and not respecting what those job descriptions are. So um so it's important to get your view as to those positions. Um I'm going to work on sort of the um the clerks and the legal counsel and may bring to something back again to rules and operation. But in the near term, I do need to have your input and rules and operation in our admin guidelines as the appropriate body um with respect to the uh position most closely to you as council members, which is the council member aid position. So I will have something next week on other business for that. But I hope to also be giving you just regular updates on where we are with that study. We do have sort of a work plan of activities um and keep you along in the process generally. So with that, um unless anyone has any questions, I wanted to turn to discuss a document that should be, potentially it's in the packet, but it was late. Um and uh hopefully you have a copy of it. And this is to talk about sort of a, the confluence of two events, which is the councils, uh what I just called the budget season and high-profile trial. And so what I've been trying to do is look at um basically our needs to service both. Uh I have about fifteen years in writing budgets, and I've probably written about twenty-five. And I have to say, when I looked at the original, um the resolution that you passed with respect to your budget process, um it was very similar to the one that I used uh when I first began in the Senate, where there was sort of a staff review of the governor's budget, in this case, it'd be like the executive budget. And then um then bringing in sort of the, I call them agencies, you call them departments, um to get sort of an overview and have sort of a back and forth with um with their expertise. And kind of midstream in my uh tenure with the Senate, we made a flip to have the, what I would say, the departments come in first. And the reason for that is even more so here. Um we had the ability to sort of preview a lot of what was going to be requested because the process was open on that end. Um where in September, when the requests were made to the governor for what I I guess agencies, in this case, be like departments wanted, that was publicly available on a website. And we would, as staff, spend a lot of time working with the department uh staff to understand what those requests were. And, you know, and also help them develop them to the extent that there, there's always a good set of eyes. Are the numbers right? Are you making the right assumptions? Are we consistent? In this instance, uh the executive budget is released on the nineteenth, and there was an expectation of a turnaround for your staff by October fifth to be able to give you good information about the content of that. And we found that the best content purveyor was the actual agencies and departments. They have been living this budget for several weeks, maybe months. And they were able to answer the question better than any of the staff were, and it was really the two. What is this? And why would I fund it? And we had a much better process when we sort of allowed that conversation to happen at the start rather than what you proposed to be later. Because we were all then getting educated at the same time, and that left time thereafter to really work on what you wanted as the elected officials for the budget that you're going to pass. And so with respect to that issue, then at the same time, trying to accommodate the potential that we may need to locate in a different location and trying to look at the view of that and where we landed with respect to the alternative location. And I hope people will come by my office and we can have a talk about sort of that overall plan. Is that if we were to need to leave, and the only instance that we would would, in which we would leave is if our Open Public Meetings Act requirements are impacted or there's a declared disaster, is that we need to move to a different location. And so we had to also look at availability of space. And so while we had initially looked at the Tacoma Pierce County Public Health Department, that became unavailable. And so what you have here, as the far-right column, is sort of an alternative location. Both are located in the annex. They have both the public meeting facility, and that's what I call the annex. And then they have the cafeteria, which I've been calling camping, because it is just basically an empty room that we are, we, they can make available to us for essentially the forty-five, fifty days when we need a meeting facility. Um there is no place other than this that we could find where we were not spending either hundred dollars an hour for a meeting spot. Um but in essence, there was no place where we could know, we can come here. We would be scattered across maybe the EDS building, the TPU offices. Maybe we'd get something for a week at the Tacoma Convention Center. This was the one that gave you and the staff, I think, a certainty of a single location. It may not be the best, but it is serviceable in the event that we would need to leave. And there's, at this point, no assumption we do. Um but we just needed to have that backup plan. So this also looked at, so myself, um Mr. Bokey, the chair, sort of looked at sort of the events um and the entire calendar. And this brings me to the mention that Ms. Long had about a proposal to change the current schedule. And what it really does is sort of flip sort of the order of activity in terms of having the departments come in and talk to you about their requests and then working in the retreat fashion about what it is you want to do. And I don't believe that the content of like that those department presentations will be that different than you've had in the past. But it is an opportunity for you not to just know what is it and why would I fund it? But what priority is it to the council? What priority is it to the, all of the requests that they're making for you? There's sort of that conversation can happen. And then, as we hear your questions, as the staff hear the information, have their own questions, we're billing in also some time so that you can have that back and forth. So if you look at this document, and I have it basically by week one, week two, because I'm looking at the trial for a ten-week period, a twelve-week period, is beginning September eighteenth. They're scheduled, which is the middle column, which is what you have scheduled today. And then the next column um immediately to the right is sort of the proposed budget activity. And that way, we, if you choose the recommendation to move to this different budget activity, then the last column is where we could be located um if an event were to take place. The other thing we also looked at with respect to this calendar are other activities going on. So there are, um we're trying to accommodate members being able to go to the Board of Health, go to the PRC, some other organizations that I don't believe is looked at even with respect to the original calendar. Um so you see more activity kind of happening in October. Um and then sort of, once you get to the end of October, where you were having committees, the whole, you start to flip and have those retreats where you can talk about what you learned, where you want to go, and direct your staff in terms of developing alternatives with the department. And so it is your schedule. I would just say, um from, from my perspective, I want to make sure each meeting you have is of value. And I think it is very difficult in a very short period of time to digest the budgets when you have people available. And honestly, in any conversation I've had with the executive branch, they kind of welcome that conversation to really discuss what they intended in this budget. Um so having that conversation earlier rather than later um is likewise seen as being helpful and conducive to helping you decide what you want to do with the budget.
Ms. Murray, thank you for um briefing us on this. Uh I too very much um concur, flipping the order of operation. Uh i- is very helpful for all those reasons. We'll be able to learn firsthand from the proposers, the the departments and the executive uh as we learn along and uh get our questions answered. Um and I, and will better uh prepare the council for developing its uh it's budget for um final consideration before uh before Thanksgiving. Um I think it'll be a more efficient use of time, um better communication, better understanding. So thank you for that. Uh I'll, I'll also just note that while we can't avoid every possible conflict of um personal calendars, of external boards and commissions that we all serve on, we are looking to avoid the Board of Health, as Ms. Murray said, and some other key ones. But it's going to be impossible to do the council's business in the short amount of time we're given between September nineteenth and Thanksgiving without some conflicts. It's, it's impossible to avoid every conflict. So we're going to have to remain um flexible wi- with each other um and continue to work together. Uh and we're going to attempt to avoid the most uh critical conflicts as much as possible. For example, the Board of Health. Questions or comments about anything that we've heard this morning? We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your work on this. Um I do like the idea of flipping it. The other thing I noticed here is that in doing so, we've added five additional budget meetings during this time. And there were two weeks where we had a week off from it, and now there's no weeks during the ten-week period when we're not uh having budget meetings, which normally makes me pretty happy uh because I love discussing budgets. But um I know I've, based upon what we had worked on before, I planned some uh trips because I thought we had weeks without budget. So are is this pretty well locked down, what we're going to look at, and why do we have so many additional meetings?
Uh well, obviously, this is something that you would have to change via the resolution, so nothing is yet locked down. I think that there are some additional meetings um in the calendar that you may not need. But it's, we also have to do that contingency. If we were to move, one of the um difficulties is that we would have to know that we're doing a special session. Um so it may cause some cas- cancellations um for us to even move. And so I think there is some play, but um but it is sort of a uh a lot to squeeze into a short period of time. And so one oth- one other thought was basically your decision fatigue and your ability to sort of absorb that much was, could we spread it out a little bit more? But um we can have discussions if there's conflicts.
And another question, Chair.
Sure.
For me, the Thursday and Friday, October twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh when we've rescheduled the budget retreat, um was the intent, if we're not forced off campus, to have that um retreat here in chambers? Are those all-day retreats or where we're already, usually when we do the full-budget retreats, we head out to ESB or we head somewhere else?
I think the intention was to be here in the CCB um and not try to keep moving to different places. However, we obviously have the cafeteria in the annex available. They're already reserved, but not necessarily ESB. With respect to the twenty-seventh, I mean, I think that was probably one of those that we were looking at, sort of more of a, if need to have.
Right, but usually when we're in the retreat mode, it's a little different than the uh uh briefings. And so, of course, one time I, we also just moved upstairs. So I guess we haven't always uh gone off-site, but uh just wondering if we wanted to plant something other than the cafeteria or something a little more informal, but we, we, Paul Bokey, council staff, we still have the ESB in our initial, what was going to be initial retreats in October. Well, we'll have to, if we, if you want an outside retreat site in November, I mean, the plan is to have it here. As Ms. Murray, as Ms. Murray mentioned, that the, you know, circumstances could, could push us off-site. We could certainly use um the, the cafeteria. We could look for the ESB, but I don't know that it'll be available at this, at this late date. To discuss your questions about the number of dates, it's really a variable. It's based on what the council would like and how many different departments you would like to to have come and speak to you. So um we have spoken with the chair, uh the, the council mentioned in, in, in a previous setting that I believe a budget committee of the whole, that you wanted human services to come early. I believe there's a desire to have public safety come early. And so we're going to, and we're going to be working on that schedule uh very soon um to, to, to put those, what you want to do with the backend of your schedule. If you want more time to just have discussions with staff and and that, that kind of thing and less meetings, that's fine. It's very flexible. I would note that there's six retreats down here. Y- you know, you can go. That's again, up to the council as to, uh as to how you want to direct those retreats because the nature of the retreats has changed, rather than us going through the document and talking about the budget and what the changes are. You're going to already know that. So the purpose of the retreats now has changed to, you're giving us our, your input on what you like in the exec's budget, what you think is missing and those kind of things so that we can work with that as staff.
A- and I would add um another focus of the retreat that I, I think we, we envision is our council staff helping to analyze the executive's proposal as its cons- as to its consistency with council's priorities. So being able to have more thoughtful conversation about that. Uh Vice Chair Campbell um uh uh underlines, I, I think, the, the, the real point here, the, the budget retreat as we've known it. Um do we, do we go to a, a different location to get a different scenery for all the reasons that that presents itself? I think that, and I would love more feedback on this. I, I think um Vice Chair Campbell started to illuminate the, the trade-offs here. That I think that the, the trade-offs are, going to a different location presents um the, the upside is different scenery, different uh, different tone, different inform- informality. There's, there's lots of benefit to that. Some of the, some of the things that Ms. Murray and I have been balancing is um with uh expectations of Zoom, um to today's work environment, people participating in Zoom, moving off campus could hinder our ability to have a fully functioning Zoom environment i- in case someone gets ill and wants to still participate via Zoom, whether they be staff or or a member, and they get ill and they want to participate online, that, does a that, does an off-site location really a- allow for that easily? It, it may or may not. Um a- a- and then overlay that, the, the complexities of moving around as we're trying to plan around the, the high-profile trial and what it might do to us. So we, we've been balancing all of that and would love for more member feedback about how important it is to go to an alternate location. Vice Chair Campbell, I ask you to continue with, with your thoughts and feedback.
Yeah, uh it just longs that's in the thinking. I think uh I, I guess I was kind of overlooking the need for Zoom, so obviously being here would have its advantages. Certainly, apparently, you may have scheduled to be away a little bit during one of the weeks. So um uh yeah, just that, that's all being taken into account. And uh if I may, just on a different, slightly related item, we had put in as part of
And, uh, if I may, just on a different slightly related item, we had put in as part of processing last week. The, um, grant, or the mental health dollars that we're allocating. There was a request into the finance department that put a request into the prosecutor. And do we have word back on that yet? Because that seems to, um, depending on what finance department says. Our whole budget maybe just be more performative and less actual us deciding what's in there.
Yeah, Ms. Long and I had a discussion about that on Friday. And so she's asking scheduling a meeting, um, with DPA folks, because to date we don't have a response to that. And I agree with you that it does influence how you build this budget. Uh, but we don't have it yet. I, I would just say with return, with respect to an alternate location is that if we wanted to do that, despite the fact I do call it camping. Is that we use that as an opportunity, we, we use the sites for which we have today. It's both a test for us and the staff of can we, um, allow that kind of environment, the fully functional Zoom? And have you and the public and the staff be able to move in that sort of short notice? It's almost like a coop, uh, pu- uh, planning exercise. Because the downside is, is if we continue to, if we tried to get to comfort, we would be moving all over the place. And I think that's also a hindrance to the public to know where we are. We're either here or we're at the annex. They're both county facilities and they recognize it. I do recognize ESD, that was one of the more difficult ones for us because it is one that people like. That it was just not available for our needs. And so if we were to move, we could all get the experience of what it is to move if we have to move in 24 hours. By using the annex and the cafeteria.
We've done it before. We can do it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer room.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just on a lighter note, maybe we could just add some artwork to the windows and pipe in Babbling Creek music. And we think we were somewhere else. I'm down with that. But anyway, uh, I, I was just kind of curious since we're flip flopping kind of the, the process around, communication with the executive. I mean, they, they, there are his departments. So I, I want to make sure that communication is, is going between the exec. As far as what our anticipations are. And I would assume then finance has got to be here at every meeting?
Potentially. I mean, it'll be their decision to make, but I've had discussions with both, uh, Gary Robinson and Wolfgang prior to even approaching this. Whether they thought there was utility and very much were in agreement that this would be helpful, um, for them to get that information to you. Because they're, they're kind of doing it a month late, a month later. So they thought it would facilitate a better conversation. So they do know, and we also are going to be sending out what I guess is termed the blackout letter. With respect to, uh, looking at legislation during the budget period and sort of holding off on legislation. That's either not the budget or, uh, legislation necessary to implement the budget. So we would, if this, they feel there is at least some, some, uh, consistency that we would make this change. Give notice to all the departments with respect to not only legislation, but we are looking at moving events. And you'd be asked to be more available in October and to let us know if there are events that are, which are unavoidable for them. So for example, if the sheriff has to take this one week to go to a annual conference. That we can sort of talk earlier about the actual, you know, uh, items in each day with the department. So that they are available and can fulfill the function we are assuming with the new schedule.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that since we're kind of doing things different this time, that they aren't assuming it's going to be based on the old schedule. And have, like you say, booked things a year in advance.
Yeah, we gave them kind of a preview of just what we were thinking. And that's why you can see this overview of the executive's budget on the 28th. We already had talked to Gary Robinson, is that doable? And they said very much so. So, uh, I think, I think it's fair to say that they're pretty happy with the idea of changing. Because they get to explain much earlier. And I think explain maybe connections between different departments and why this funding over here in a human services division connects to a parks. They can give you that kind of connection much better, I think, than the, um, your nonpartisan staff can. Because they just haven't lived the budget like they have.
Thank you. Thank you. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Ms. Murray. I think two questions. One, are we going to have PC TV and Zoom when we're at the annex? Cause I saw one that had a note of no Zoom and I wasn't understanding.
Yeah, that is true with respect to, um, if the assumption here is PC TV is available and Zoom is available with the, except where noted. So for example, that did bring an issue about October 11th. Okay. In the current plan with the, um, budget retreat. So I believe that is why we were proposing nothing, cause, because we wouldn't have Zoom.
Okay.
On that day.
And then my second question is in regards to, um, election season. I'm assuming that the annex and the auditor's office and all of that, that's going to be happening over there. Were not impacting their ability to do the elections and the supervision and all the volunteers.
No one, yeah, we, in order to reserve these rooms, we kind of had to let their, uh, admin assistants know, and I emailed those directors directly and saying that we appreciate that they're giving us. Cause this is a common space for just the entire annex. And so I just expressing my appreciation that they would give it to us for four months. And no one, no one, um, expressed any concern about it. It's more to the, I think to the right of the building, near the public works and not to the left where there's sort of the election and other activities.
Okay. I just know they kind of explode during election season with people in the area. So, um, so thank you. I appreciate the overlay. My second kind of topic, but related is around the, the flip. So one of the things, I've only done this once so far as a council member, is that we had our council staff given overview. And then we all had time to digest and presented questions to county staff, to departments. And then those questions came back when they presented. So when, when would you think, or when are we thinking those questions would happen? Would they happen on the fly when the staff are here from the departments? Or is it after the fact and then?
The way I would operate it is obviously that when they're here making their presentations, they're available to you to ask those questions. And if they need to follow up or you have follow up questions, you're using your nonpartisan staff to sort of funnel that. So that they're working back and forth with the, um, the departments and you when we get those responses. And when we get to the retreat, if these are questions that are being asked in like an open meeting, we would hope that we can also share that information with all of you. So there'll be more of the back and forth using your nonpartisan staff than that direct one-on-one with the departments. And part of that is just to facilitate that all of you get the, all of you get the information.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Wanted to, uh, um, reflect on also something that Vice Chair Campbell mentioned. It, there, there may be, um, a change in this budget where, uh, we may get a, a finding, uh, that, um, how we do procurement may be different. I stress may, uh, may be different. And therefore the use of, uh, provisos by the legislative branch and, uh, and executive branch may be, may be used, um, more or differently than years past because of that. And, um, there, there could be other changes that I haven't, uh, thought about yet. But that is one that comes to mind. And I, I guess I raised that in the spirit of why I, th- there's several reasons why I think this year in particular, we need to at least plan for more time together to have more conversation together. It's things like that, that might, it's not just moving a little bit of money around. We might have to like re- rethink how we appropriate funds. If we're going to create a, a, a new initiative with proviso language. It, it might take a little bit more work and more conversation amongst the seven of us to do that. And so that, 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 that and all the other reasons expressed with all the, uh, a, a bit more uncertainty this year with the confluence of things happening at the same time. It is why a, a little bit more time together, uh, as a council. I think at least to be planned for, we can always, uh, end early. Cancel a day if, if it's not going to be a, a good use of time. But that, that is also some of the thinking, uh, again, um, the, the thought that Vice Chair Campbell raised about. We might have to think about how we make the legislative branches, um, desires, uh, known and put into law a little differently this year than previous. Well, Ms. Murray, um, thank you. I'm, I'm, I, I heard some good questions, um, uh, about the, the thinking of the change in schedule. You have been in contact with the executive branch on our behalf. To make sure that this way of doing things, um, would work for them. So thank you for doing that. One of the next steps, to be clear, uh, two, I think really clear next steps. One is to run a resolution, um, to amend the, uh, the committee of the whole and budget retreat schedule so we can properly notice. So that is one step. Another step is a communication from the council to the executive and other countywide, uh, uh, electeds. Um, about what we're calling a blackout period to inform them that the council does not anticipate taking up, um, a, a lot of action, a, a lot of legislative action. That necessarily needs a lot of our attention, our staff's attention during the heavy budget period. So our staff can really stay focused on, uh, budget considerations on our behalf. So communicating that along with the, the budget schedule, um, that communication is also a, a next step. Ms. Murray, any other, um, closing comments in administrative updates here?
No.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. Thank you for that discussion. Is there any other business by members this morning? I'm not seeing any Ms. Long or Ms. Murray, uh, any other business this morning for council? Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council in Monday's study session, we are adjourned.